Reed Campbell.
Here.
Tom Haglund.
Here.
Sue Kern.
Here.
Ruth Nelson. Bob Nystrom. Chris Robinson.
Here.
Four of the six present.
We have a quorum, so we'll go ahead. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have one amendment to our agenda tonight. Under the consent calendar for the request for addition, it's a one full-time special ed teacher at Lowell Elementary. So approval of the agenda is amended.
I saw a move with that amendment.
Second.
Okay, we have a first from Director Campbell and a second from Director Robinson. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. District recognitions. Elaine, would you share that with us?
Yep, we have one district recognition tonight, and that is congratulations to Nisswa Elementary School on being voted one of the best schools in the Best of the Brainerd Lakes contest. So congratulations to Molly and her team on that.
Great job. Okay, now is the time for our public input. Is there anybody who would want to come before the board? We have a three-minute limit. Seeing none, we'll just go ahead. Building project update. Chris Seamer and Natalie Hoff. Could you please come forward?
Good evening. Tonight's an exciting night. We're coming to you to, for approval of Nisswa Harrison and the new elementary in Baxter for schematic design. With that, just want to give you a little bit of background of how we've gotten here. It's taken quite a few extensive meetings over the summer months, and I do have to commend you and your staff for the commitment that was shown. Molly, Tammy, and Kathy's staff, all very committed. One of the better districts, if not the best, that I've ever seen doing this process over the summer. You never know what you're going to get for people that are around, but I would say everyone who committed came to pretty much every meeting throughout the summer and gave us the input that we needed. And it's really the only reason that we're here before you tonight is that we got the input that we needed to get the design team to a point where we are tonight. Also, we had the open house on last Wednesday. I think that was very successful. Looked like we may have had as much as 200 people come through, anyone given time besides the staff that were present. And I don't know what all the comments were that were received, but I only heard positive things throughout the evening. So again, congratulations on that, and again, another statement to where we've gotten in the process, so. Sit down here.
I think the only negative was Miss Nault crying during. It was good.
Sorry, slide. Did I just hit slideshow or something? It's not fitting on the screen. Okay, with that, I'll just go through where we're at with each of the buildings. Again, we're going through Harrison, the new elementary, and Nisswa. Is there a slideshow or something they could add on this?
They get some PDFs, so you'll just have to scroll through.
Okay, sorry about that.
Yeah, it is.
Here?
Yep.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. So again, Harrison Elementary, this is the draft site plan that we have as of right now. Again, in a parallel path, we have the property acquisition that'll be coming to you at the next board meeting. So there'll be more detail discussed at that point. But again, we're thinking at the larger picture at this point, as it relates to schematic design and the site and the building addition. So here are the draft plans as of right now for each of the levels. Again, we're planning this building for a three-section building for K through four. And those will exist in the existing portion of the building with the addition housing the main office, the gym, and the media center predominantly with a few support spaces. And then as well as a kitchen addition that'll support the existing student dining area or the old gym space. Here's a preliminary massing diagram of that space. Again, it shows kind of the site concept as well of that area. And here's another view from the northeast of the massing of the building. Again, these are all preliminary, but that's really where we're at, schematic design. We're starting to look at what that will look like in terms of massing the building. As we get into design development, we'll get into more detail of how that looks and what the details look and how that's represented throughout the building. Here's another view from the northeast corner up above. Next building, Nisswa.
Hey, Chris, before you go on, can you just quickly just explain the, I think I can understand the bus pickup and drop-off?
Yep.
Assuming with the buses there, but the parent, or the parent pickup and drop-off, is that on the west side?
That'll all occur on the west side, correct. So the little corral on the indent on the drive there, that'll be for special ed buses. With that sidewalk out of the round bump out of the existing building is where special ed will be housed in the lower level. So the idea is that they have direct access to there for buses and direct access in.
And that's parent drop-off as well?
Parent drop-off as well. So they'll use that sidewalk that's up on top.
Sure, yeah.
And then head towards that entry as well.
And then they drop off and then just keep heading north?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
And then is that a one-way, that street? Is that what you?
Yeah, right now it's planned to come off Oak and enter onto Norwood, so.
Okay.
That's the preliminary idea there. Again, taking most, if not all, the traffic off of Oak, no drop-off, no buses there. Taking them to the quieter side of the site.
Thanks.
Yep.
Kathy, do you have anything that you want to add that he didn't talk about maybe regarding that building?
It's so much safer for our students with this design. Particularly like this morning, I saw a parent drop off on Oak and let the child go across Oak. And as we know, that is a highway and that is not safe. This will have everybody who's going to be picked up by a parent on one side, bussing over here. And we already have an idea of where our walkers and our pickups are going to be. It will be so much safer for our kids.
Good. Thank you.
The next building, Nisswa. Again, here's the preliminary site plan. The parking shown on here right now, just for reference, is currently not in the budget, but it's something we're investigating just in case we were required by the city of Nisswa to add some additional parking. The floor plans, so the addition is really over by the gym, adding that extra gym station and creating one full-size gym space with the space we have, and then a two-story classroom addition. And then remodeling the existing southern area of the building. Having a flex room down in that area and a flex in the additional space so that there is room for some growth. Additionally, there's potential for two more classrooms at some point in that classroom addition as well. And then enlarging the lunchroom, as well as remodeling the kitchen area and the new office area. Additionally to that, the reason the area was chosen that we have the addition right now is it allows for future growth at some point, if needed, on the south of the building as well. As you recall, there was a long addition in the referendum planning down there. We opted for this solution as it gives us future growth at a future time, so. Here's an image.
Chris, if you could again just on the, and I realize we're just looking at the schematics, but I'm assuming you're including the parking area as well. So we had talked last week about the student parent drop-off.
Correct.
So that'll be revisited?
We'll be revisiting that shortly here in the next week or two, taking your comments that we've received.
So let me just clarify, when we do go through to approve the schematics, we're not including the parking in the flow where we are?
As of right now, it's not known that it's necessarily needed, but it's not in the current budget right now. If we want to add that, we'd have to look at what that would mean.
Yeah, I understand that piece, but on the west side of?
Yep. That currently as well was not in the budget, but we could look at restriping scenarios and how we can improve that flow over there.
And then with the new entrance, it might, might be a little bit different as to how the students are dropped off by parents and such because the entrance will be in a different place.
Correct. The entrance will be now in the middle rather than the corner.
Right.
So a preliminary rendering of the entrance with the current library in the forefront. And then again, a preliminary rendering of the west side of the building with the classroom additions. Any questions on this one? New elementary in Baxter, again, this one is the exception in the group as we are working on the traffic study and land acquisition on a parallel track, so this is just the building.
Let's see, Molly, do you have anything that you want to add at all about your building?
I'm just really excited that it's not going to be, it's with the two levels. I never even dreamt of that, so the plan is better than I could have ever dreamt of. And it's been just not as long, so I can get to every area. And just the security piece, as I talk to my parents coming in, they're so excited about that that we're going to have, every school that we walk into will have these common pieces that no child in our district is going to walk into a school and know that you live in that community or this community. It's just going to be, it's going to be equal. And so whenever I'm sharing the plans, the parents are like, I never even thought that it would be this big. We thought we would just, a few more classrooms and, and so just the renderings is, it's going to be, it's everything. Amazing. Really excited.
Thank you.
New elementary in Baxter. So again, the floor plan, again, as I was noting, traffic study and land acquisition is happening on a parallel track with the traffic studying looking to wrap up in the next two weeks. So land acquisition will start speeding up there as well, I believe. But in the meantime, making sure the relationships of the building and the layout work. We've worked extensively with Tammy and her group to get to this point. So as you can see, the building's a five-section building with the opportunity for another six-section. And in reality, it could be another seven or eight, depending on how far you want to take the wings. Again, ultimately, it's going to be dependent on how big you want the elementary to be because as you add classrooms, obviously it adds population to the building. But kindergarten as well could get another section. And then we're just dashing in the extra gym here to show what that would mean in the future if that was something the district wanted to pursue when the funds were available. This is a preliminary rendering of the main entrance. From a little bit higher from the front. And then from the back of the building. Any questions?
I was wondering, Chris, one of the things we talked a lot about in the standards meetings were the room sizes. So are we pretty much going to be standard across?
Pretty close. We're in the 850 to 900 range.
So very close in each of the buildings?
Very close, which is within the range of the MDE recommendations, and the kindergarten rooms are within their range there as well. Again, one of the strategies we used in the floor plans was not necessarily putting all that square footage in the classroom. It's these resource or learning commons that we've arranged the classrooms around, so it provides for some breakout space and group learning opportunities. But at the same time, you have your traditional classroom that you can pull your students into and teach.
And Tammy is back there too.
Tammy, what do you think?
I think my, what I would throw out there is that my group has been busy. Every other week, all summer long, meeting and touching base on our own in between, so we were ready to come back with information. So Chris, you're right, it's been a long process and a dedicated group, and they're excited and thankful and grateful to the community for their investment in us. So folks are willing to put in the time. And we really do feel like our voices have been heard by all of the consulting groups and, you know, WOSN. Everyone hearing us say the feel that we want in our elementary. And I really feel even with the size of this school, it's a large school with five sections. It could get larger with six. So we wanted things kind of tucked up, I guess, as a way we described it. And people could hear our vision and kind of get us to where we want it to be. So no grade level team area will be too far from the central places that all of our children need to travel. The media center, the gymnasium, the lunchroom area, and for staff too. So it's, I'm just very thankful and I would say proud of the work that my group has done and of the community for their investment in us.
Later on in your meeting, obviously, there'll be a motion for each building. We'll be looking for approval on each. So before we get to that point, I guess, are there any other questions? Otherwise, I can just walk you through next steps that we'll be looking at as we move into design development.
I just had one question. As far as the entrances, we can still tweak that a little bit?
Yeah, again, these are preliminary massing and just ideas. There'll be opportunity during design and development to rework those or move them around a little bit.
Anybody else have questions?
So as I mentioned, the next phase is design development. And predominantly during that phase, we get into the details of each room. So you'll start hearing about user groups. We'll start sitting down with staff in smaller groups and going through how each room lays out. As you can see on this plan, there's an idea how furniture lays out and where the front of the room is. We'll get into the details like that, specifics of the kitchen, the gym, how many hoops there are. You know, those kind of real details that'll really create the building as a whole. And then, as noted, the exterior envelope and the massing will get more refined as we continue throughout as well.
Chris, as we go on to the next phase, doing a lot more of the specifics as far as the design. We know that we're going to be bringing in some more buildings like Lowell and Garfield and such fairly soon. When do you foresee that we'll be starting what we're just completing in these buildings and be starting those buildings to ensure that we have all of our facilities completed within the four years?
We'll likely start the next wave of those meetings with such as Lowell and Garfield, possibly South Campus. There may be two or, two more phases. We're really looking at how that'll break down. But that'll start in the spring, when we start getting some of these bid out and awarded, and the construction will start effort on those. That'll allow us the time to start focusing on those other sites.
Okay. Were you going to talk to us, Natalie, or?
No, for now, I don't have a lot to add on property acquisition. Jeff and I have been visiting with homeowners and people, just to inform them of what's coming and let them know about the public hearing that they'll be publicizing this week on the 24th, so.
Great. Thank you.
I think Kathy wanted to comment on Harrison.
Oh, Kathy?
I'd just like to piggyback a little bit on what my colleague here said, Tammy. Working with Chris and the entire group, they need to be commended for taking passion and heartfelt thank you. They listened to every minor detail that we asked of them, and they made it come true in better form than what we ever could envision. They've been a joy to work with. They've listened. The whole architect group, they need to be commended for a job that is just beyond, I don't have enough words. And also to a thank you to this community because we take it very serious and we're not going to let anybody down. But again, I want to commend Chris and everybody for the job that they've done.
All right, thank you. If there's no other questions, we'll just move on here with our agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approval of the minutes for the August 27th board meeting.
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a first with Director Haglund and a second with Director Campbell. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. Consent calendar. This is what we've amended here. And Heidi, were you going to speak to us about what we've just added, please?
Good evening.
Good evening.
The one position that was not on the agenda originally was a position that's being added at Lowell Elementary. We've been watching the special education numbers at Lowell for the last couple of years, and we've seen them maintaining at a very high level. They are beginning the year, there's three special education teachers there right now, and they're beginning the year with their caseloads at 20 and 21. That's extremely high. We typically like to see an elementary teacher start between 13 and 15. And then they end the school year right between 23 and 25 because they will identify and assess students throughout the school year. So they're starting high, they already have five students in evaluations, so we know those are going to go up. So by the end of October, we already anticipate their caseloads to be at about 23 apiece. Because of the spacing issues at Lowell, they have a very unique, I don't know if you've been there, but three of them office out of one room. So they do a lot of push-ins into those classrooms, which is getting to be more of a stretch. So one of the first things they thought is maybe requesting an additional educational assistant. But we felt it would be more beneficial to make the recommendation of a teacher knowing all the due process and evaluation requirements that are demanded of those teachers. In addition, they have seven special education, they're twice exceptional students that are in the Agate program. They're also very rigorous and time-demanding because of the unique needs that they bring into those aspects. So the staff are feeling very stretched. We felt it would be more beneficial to add a certified staff versus an educational assistant. Right now too, if you look at the fiscal perspective of that, and state special education aid, Brainerd is not hitting the state ceiling anymore. We have that gap. So when we add that, we should see about 55% of that position reimbursed through state special education aid. So as a recommendation after meeting and looking at their evaluation caseloads, we've watched enrollment numbers. They're not leaving Lowell. They're staying there. And they're, they're going to be there for the year. So that's a recommendation. The other thought behind that too is one we've added. I know there was a teacher added at Garfield is they're, they're taking more of a flex position. So that bubble shifts someplace else, then we could move that position with that bubble.
I had a question on the point 5.1 Title I through or with St. Francis. How does that work financially again? I know I asked this years ago.
And Mr. Murtha, may, if I do this wrong? No, I think, I think I have it, but, but, but if I get it wrong, let me know. All right. With, thank you, thank you. What a team. With federal dollars, we are, it's proportionate share. So just like we have title on ours, our special education, we have to allow so much of those dollars to go back to the private schools. So with that title funding, I think we're up to point 5.
Well, 2.5, our obligations, and these are students within our attendance area who are qualified for Title I federal service.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Kathy, want to address the 1.0 FD, the ed assistant at Harrison as well?
Yes.
That's an addition as well.
That would be an addition as well. We had a high-needs student coming in, and I have Mrs. Nault here. So going into Level 3 programming, typically in our Level 3 programmings, we try to keep those at around 8. The student brings that classroom up to 9. And again, in smaller spaces, they've actually moved classrooms over the weekend, Miss Nault? So, and just to the high behavior, the thought was to add that additional staff to help support the needs in that classroom. And again, since we're not hitting that ceiling, about 55% of that position will also come through and stay there.
Thank you.
So.
Okay. Is there a motion for the consent calendar? Thank you, Heidi.
Yep, thank you.
Move approval of the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a first from Director Robinson and a second from Director Haglund. And, oh, they both said it. Oh, did they? Okay. Sorry, I did. I thought I'd come to Tom. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Same sign. Motion passes. State reports and communications. State accountability assessments. Sue Anderson. And Mr. Murtha is coming too.
Good evening. This year brings the first time that we are working with the Every Student Succeeds Act, which is federal legislation replacing the No Child Left Behind. So I'm going to give you a little brief overview of what that means and what that looks like for our staff and our district. There are five levels of things that they're going to look at. There used to be four under No Child Left Behind. The fifth one is the consistent attendance, which is new. So academic achievement is basically how many kids pass the test versus how many kids are eligible to take the test. Progress towards English language proficiency is new, that that is being called out separately. Districts have to have a minimum of 20 students that are receiving EL services in a school building in order to be held to this accountability measure. We don't, although our numbers are rapidly growing. So that could be a factor we're going to deal with in the future. Academic progress is a transition matrix. Basically, it's tracking kids' movement, achievement band movement on the test. Moving from partially meets to meets or meets to exceeds from one year to the next. That is replacing the growth indicator. Growth scores are still required. The state legislature will continue to have those provided to us, but it isn't part of our accountability. It's for our internal use. Graduation rates. Four-year graduation rate is still there. That is an indicator where kids hit ninth grade, they're going to track that they graduate in a traditional four-year timeline. They have added a seven-year rate, which for us is very positive because we have a very robust transitions program, 18 to 21 special education program. Those students were never counted as graduates within the timeline because they are served until they're 21. And that's when they're ultimately coded as a graduate. So the seven-year will encompass all of those students for us, which is a good thing. And then consistent attendance. Again, this is something new. The expectation is, is that 90% of the students will attend 90% of the day of the school year. So the next slides will break it down a little bit more specifically. So academic achievement is the meets and exceeds over everybody that's eligible to test. Pretty straightforward. This is the transition matrix. This is, a student is only counted if they had a score last year. So it starts in third grade. And if they were a meets proficiency in math in third grade, and then in fourth grade, they were a meets proficiency again, where those two intersect, there's a two in pink, they get two progress points. If that meets student actually was an exceeds in fourth grade, they achieve five points. The way this is broken down by the state is they take every student in a school building that takes a test. They figure out based upon this matrix what their score is. They add them all together, divided by the number of students, and that is their progress score for the students. Graduation rate, again, four-year cohort and seven-year cohort. The big change to this is students who dropped out, if they were a ninth grader, 10th grader, 11th grader, and half of 12th grade in one school district, and they were coded as a dropout in Mars in their senior year, that school, even if they show up someplace else next year, that high school will own them for their graduation rate. It doesn't help us as much as we would like in terms of our ALC because typically students transfer. They don't drop. They don't drop out of school, they leave a high school, and they come to our Alternative Learning Center. Those are not considered dropouts. So then if they come to the ALC in April of their senior year because they're not eligible to graduate, they're going to not graduate in four years, and that will be held to the AEC. Summer graduates will continue. Those students who are not credit-eligible and couldn't walk the line in May, if they have one or two credits to make up, if they do it during the summer, they will be part of that four-year cohort. For us, consistent attendance means students who miss less than 17 days in a school year. And the expectation is, is 90% of the kids will attend 90% of the school year.
Sue, do you have a sense on how we're scoring right now? That seems like a lot of time to miss, but just curious.
Our elementary schools are pretty much right around 90%. So they're hitting that mark for consistent attendance. Our middle school and high school are not. When I looked at this first year drawing out, it was about 75% of the high school students are attending 90% of the school year.
So 10% of the, how many school days we have, 100?
173.
So they're missing more than 17?
Correct. And that's excused and unexcused absences. But that does not include school-sponsored sports because those are school-sponsored activities. So with this legislation, it's just like No Child Left Behind. Title I schools are the first area that they look at, and the highest level will be placed at the lowest 5% of Title I schools in the state. In the elementary realm, where we have our title schools, it's approximately 34 schools in the state will be identified. It also, and this is new, identifying any public high school that has a four-year graduation rate lower than 67%. And that's for any of the subgroups that we would have in our district. If you are identified, you will do an improvement plan with the state. The way you're identified is first, academic achievement. The big thing is, is it's academic achievement for math, academic achievement for reading, those are separate. So they'll look at that, they'll look at all of the Title I schools, and they'll look for the lowest 25% of academic achievement by subject area. If you're in that pocket, you move to Stage Two. Stage Two is the lowest 25% of the lowest 25% in progress scores for math and for reading, either or. So you may, you could not make it in academic achievement in reading, but you could not make it in academic progress for read, or for math. It doesn't have to be in the same subject, you just have to hit each pocket. And if you fall into that bottom 25%, then they look at consistent attendance, and they will look at the lowest attendance rates to get that 5%. There are new goals that Minnesota has laid out. The first four are all expected by 2025. They want reading and math achievement rates at 90% with no subgroup lower than 85. Third-grade reading specifically at 90% with no groups below 85. Eighth-grade math, and then progress towards English language proficiency. The two that are coming up a little faster, by the year 2020, they want the consistent attendance rate to be at 95% with no subpopulation at 90. And the graduation rate, they want to move from a four-year graduation rate of 90% with no subgroups below 85. Right now, they're holding us to that 67. So what do we know now? What we know right now is our high school has been identified for graduation rate issues in the subgroup of special education. We needed to hit 67, we were at 66.1. It was a three-year average. So we are currently working with the high school team and a district-level team with the Regions of Excellence, which are support people from the Minnesota Department of Ed, and we are working on a comprehensive needs assessment and a plan that will be submitted in March. Our Brainard Learning Center has also been identified for graduation rate for both the all category and the free and reduced subgroups. So we've hooked them in, and they're working right alongside the high school. What we have also just learned is Garfield Elementary School was recognized for success in math progress for the all students and free and reduced subgroup. Lowell was recognized for success in math progress for all students and consistent attendance for all students. Nisswa Elementary was recognized for success in math progress for all students, and Forestview Middle School was recognized for success in reading for the Hispanic subgroup. What that means is we were recognized as a subgroup in the top 5% of the state under this new accountability. Before we move to Mr. Murtha, do you have any questions?
A couple slides back, there was a reference on the attendance. By 2020, I think you need to reach 90%.
95.
95, no one below 90. And we're currently at...
I have it in the presentation. The high school is going to be at right under...
That's graduation, he's talking attendance.
I don't have the attendance data, sorry.
Yeah. Attendance between our middle school and our high school, it's floating right around 75%.
75%. So maybe you'll get administratively into this, but I won't talk about it now, but what's your plan to... Your kids here are at 90%.
We have administration at the high school, who has been contacting me, looking for ways to keep track and progress, you know, reports that we can get on our attendance processes over there. It is a conversation because obviously students who don't attend aren't going to academically perform. Therefore, they could affect graduation rates. It all is interconnected.
So I assume that we've got to, I mean strategically, it's got to be a plan of how do you convince the parents to get their kids here?
I think that's one leg of the stool.
Yep.
Okay. Parent outreach and communication about the importance of attendance is part of that, but digging down to the root cause of why is a kid choosing not to come becomes part of that. And that touches a social-emotional learning piece. The high school has identified a significant amount of work and resource that they're going to put to that through their continuous improvement plan. As I bring the continuous improvement plans for each site before you in the next month or two, you'll be able to see the specific actions that they're taking. But it's going to be more than communication to parents. It is about addressing social-emotional needs of students so they maintain engagement. If they're having attendance issues late in their academic career, there's probably been a pattern of experiences that they've had that have disengaged them from their learning, that separated them from core instruction. And that's what we have to drill back down into, and most of this, I would say all our sites are doing a very good job of approaching that now, that this has been brought to light.
I would assume that since the, our legislators came up with this, of this mandate that they must have at the state level, I mean, this is across the board in the state, I assume they've got their ideas on what's required and needed to obtain this goal? And can we lean on them for their answers?
They're willing to provide technical assistance through the Centers, the Regional Centers of Excellence, which is outreach programs from MDE that help with your continuous improvement process. We're just starting our meetings with them. We already have a very robust continuous improvement process in place, and I would argue more robust than what they are currently willing to offer us. But this is new to them as well as an expectation. So I think their resources may lag behind us for a little while, but they will catch up, and they'll be able to provide some good help downstream. It's not coming with dollars, let's put it that way.
So you mentioned the situation where we accept transfers into the ALC program late in a high school career.
Yes.
Is there the possibility for viewing our policy and strategy on the acceptance of transfer students at that point? I mean, is it possible to decline a transfer that's going to hurt us?
And that's, we welcome all. If a kid needs help, it needs a free and appropriate public education, that is our mandate. This is just the burden we bear because we have an ALC and many places do not. This is just the challenge, it's ours, and we have to own it, and we have to just take it on.
Well, I understand that we would own it for those that reside within the district boundaries, but is it a policy or is it a mandate that we accept?
It is a mandate that we accept. Unless we were to have a population large enough that it precluded anyone from, so in other words, it's like open enrollment. If we had more kids than our ALC could service, then no, we would not be taking any. The vast majority of the kids we serve are our own. So in that sense, it's kind of a moot point. These are our kids, we need to make sure we're doing this. The problem here isn't structurally with our targeted services program. The problem is the government's attempt to apply a four-year graduation rate to a program that's designed to meet the needs of students who are either already behind in credits to graduation or have had interrupted learning in life, life students. So these are students who are involved in chemical treatment, there may be a pregnancy, there may be social-emotional issues that are in play, they need a different learning environment. What happens is they tend to come to you late, it takes a while at times to identify, or earlier strategies haven't worked for them, and they need that specific thing. The four-year graduation rate as the evaluation tool is really, I think, the impediment. If we start looking at five-year graduation rates to six- and seven-year graduation rates, you see tremendous success in this program. It's just four years for kids who are at risk and are having challenges, might be an unfair expectation. We're just going to have to live with that portion of it. We do a good job of taking care of kids when they come to us. I wouldn't want to see us throwing a baby out of the bathwater and radically changing our targeted services program, which has very good long-term success in what might be a pyrrhic attempt at a four-year graduation rate. There are things we can look at in terms of credit recovery at the high school earlier. So there are two pieces we can, but this may be something we live with for a while as we work through it.
Okay, thank you for the explanation.
Okay. This portion of the presentation is going to focus on four key indicators of success. Math, science, reading, and graduation rates. What you're going to see is a very consistent theme throughout these four. Now, I shared with you prior to this presentation, the entire district's achievement summary that was used at the Continuous Improvement Treat, Continuous Improvement Treat in August, but I've pulled out some very select slides to emphasize what our success pattern is and where our challenges lay. The pattern of success is that we're noticeably above the state average as a district in all these areas, but relatively flat in terms of our overall improvement. This is belied by significant challenges in two specific areas, special education and students in poverty. The overall success that we have comes despite some certain headwinds in terms of declining resources. These come in the form of reduced Title I dollars relative to students in poverty, which has led to the loss of reading recovery. Declining Title II dollars, which focuses on class size reduction and staff development along your continuous improvement plan, and the continued sequestration of federal dollars for curriculum resources for special ed, which has created new incurred costs for us that we have not had to bear in the past. Ultimately, the fact that we're slightly leaning too flat amidst those challenges is a testimony to the success and the hard work of our teachers. But let's start with math district scores overall. So what we see is that the district has remained consistently flat around 66.7% in terms of achievement on the state accountability test. And that has really been a slight increase in our improvement, but still it's a relatively flat score coming against a continued decline by the state of Minnesota for overall scores. One notable success here is that our elementary math continues to remain more than 10% above the state average in student achievement. In terms of closing subgaps, this has been the most intractable area for us, and it's a historic one for us. We still continue to see small gains in the achievement gap for students who are special ed and students who are in poverty. Never more than a percent or a little bit more than a percent, but the aggregate effect of that over time is widening that achievement gap. This is the area we have focused most of our targeted efforts for, and I'll talk about those a little bit later in the presentation. Okay. Again, with reading, you see a very similar pattern playing about, about our flat scores. But you're seeing that against a small dip in the state. So our gap over the state has widened a little bit, but the truth of the matter is, our scores when measured against ourselves still remain flat. What's churning underneath that is we do see an increase in the achievement gap for students in special ed, but a small modest reduction over time in students who are in poverty. Now, when you see the FRP numbers decline, and in several places they do, FRP students receive the vast majority of their help through core instruction in the regular classroom. So that's the testimony to a strong core instruction, and that's where we make our bones. In the end of the analysis, our success will have to come from core instruction. You can't intervene your way out of a challenge. But what we're seeing is FRP students are starting to improve a little, but we still need a lot more work to do on that. Special ed still remains a significant challenge for us in terms of the achievement gap at this time. Science is a notable area of success, both against the state and in terms of, we see, again, in core instruction, we see our FRP achievement gap slipping down underneath 20%. We're down to 17.7%, and that continues a long-term improvement for students in poverty in science. A very notable success here is that eighth-grade science at Forestview over the last several years has seen 11.6% gain continuous improvement on the state accountability test. So there are some very good bright spots that are in the data, even though these challenges remain with us. For graduation, the line you see here is the high school graduation, which is flirting right around 90%. And the state accountability for us is going to be around 90% for all groups by 2020, with no group less than 85% thereafter. Again, we continue to outperform the state, and our lead on the state is widening relative to the high school. I'm sorry, I gave you the ISD 0819, which mirrors the state itself. So when you roll in the ALC as well, that's what you see, the green line over the blue line. The graduation rates, when we disaggregate them, for our overall graduation rate at the high school, it's right at the threshold for the 2020 target. And for our students who are white and uncomplicated, again, we're even slightly closer, we're right there. When we start looking in, again, to sped and FRP students, this is where we're going to have to make the gains, otherwise our identification will continue with them in graduation rates, 2020.
What's the two or more?
Two or more is for students who identifies them as two or more races. Students of color are in the subgroups that are involved, they're very difficult for us to calculate. We don't have enough for the individual groups at times. It seems a little insensitive to roll them all together. We're denying, again, their cultural uniqueness when we do that. What you would see in terms of achievement gaps for us if we did was these achievement gaps hover between really 0% to about 11%. And because they're so small, they popcorn all over the place every single year. There've been years when I've presented to you where our African-American male students outperformed our white uncomplicated kids, and there are years when the achievement gap has been large. When you have small populations, the variance is very high. But consistently, that is our smallest achievement gap. The real challenges for us significantly are students in poverty and special ed.
Tim, just so I understand, on the all where it's 89.1, that takes into account the white, two or more sped, and FRP?
That's all kids, yeah.
All kids, okay.
So what are we doing? Structurally, we're doing two things. One is our continuous improvement process. Each of the last three years, our capacity to identify and evaluate structures and systems that we employ in the building specific to the sites has improved. As I bring forward the continuous improvement plans for each site this year, you'll see that we're doing a much better job of targeting through the data the subpopulations that we need to work with. And you're going to see improvement in the quality of the reaction plans or the action plans that the sites are producing. Um, I won't go into all of them right now, because there are several sites and these are not small plans. I'll submit them to you all, uh, prior to the December approval date for MDE. The second structure that's been put in place is the new PLC structure, which will be in year two for this year. This is the time and place where we focus on those instructional aspects by responding to student needs as quickly as possible. I would suggest that one of the successes, one of the driving successes of the science scores is their ability to leverage the PLC structure for the use of formative assessments and the responding with targeted interventions in the classroom right away. Whether the high school uses it through wind time or Forest View uses it through RTI time, they're doing a very good job of leveraging that system we put in place. These are two structures I think we need to leave in place, continue to build capacity in. They're going to be strong engines for us of long-term growth. We, we can get reactionary and start ripping stuff out and throwing stuff around, but these two processes over time, I think are our best hope, or not best hope, they're our best strategy for pro-closing achievement gaps. There are certain specific targeted actions that the district is taking to address these issues. Number one was the district-wide summer reading program. Ms. Biorgi is going to present on that when we're finished today, so I'm not gonna say much more about that program. The next two, the Carnegie Coaching for Special Education Math and Foundations of Math and Moving Math Special Ed Curriculum Pilot are, uh, the, the curriculum pilot came out of the Coaching Carnegie Math, which is something we do in partnership with Sourcewell. This is targeted specifically at secondary special ed math instruction. And Ms. Wallace will present in October on the findings of the curriculum pilot and also outline the details of the coaching, uh, structure that there's there. The, the final thing is the Elementary Special Education Literacy Work Group. We started it last spring, we've picked, we're picking it up again this fall, and I'll be reporting to you on a monthly basis the work that the group has done in terms of identifying what does tier two and tier three look like for that multi-tiered system of support that we need to make sure is in place for all students. So we're aware of our successes, we're aware of our challenges, and we have strong actions that we're taking to support the successes, to ensure that they continue, and to ensure that we're addressing the challenges that we have before us. Amen.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
So, Tim, you said you'd be reporting back?
Yep.
So we can see what, where we are and what our goals are and...
Absolutely. We're putting together the goals right now, putting some finishing touches on some language for them. The action plans take a little longer to clean up, because when the site teams work in August to put them together, the audience of these documents is themselves, so it's not complete sentences. In order to get it to presentation quality, it takes us a little time to clean that language up.
Thank you.
Okay.
Very good, thank you. Next up, we have the summer reading program. Jill Biorgi.
There it is. It might have locked us out. Who logs into this website? So that we can do the PowerPoint?
It's up on the top.
It's not working.
Can you hit the refresh cycle, uh, circle? They're really cute pictures of kids.
Could you take them?
No, and unfortunately, I'm not in any of them either, otherwise they would...
Is it because this was logged out?
It could be.
Okay. Is that it? No. This one? Perfect. It doesn't wanna work.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
I will try to look cute.
Good job, sometimes like a five-year-old. Um, so, good evening. My name is Jill Biorgi, I'm the literacy coordinator and trainer for the elementary K-four program that we have, and I'm also the social studies coordinator for the elementaries. And this year I also get to be the literacy coach at Harrison Elementary. So, um, when Mr. Murtha first asked me to come and share with you about the summer reading program, I was a little nervous to speak in front of all of you, and yet very, very grateful to have an opportunity to say thanks to a lot of people that made it happen. In the spring of two thousand seventeen, at the district advisory council meeting, Ruth Nelson and some amazing parents that are a part of that team had, we had a lot of discussion about what can we do about summer slide? So that we're not spending that first six weeks of school trying to catch kids up to where they ended. And, um, when that meeting was over, Ruth came up to me and she said, "I really, really would encourage you to do something with this." So, that's, then that fall, the literacy coaches and a group of teachers got together and we started to meet, and it literally took us nine months to plan the summer reading program for this summer. It also took some time for all of us to write grants so that we could have some funding to make this happen. The team that got together wrote a book called Do This, Not That, No More Summer Reading Loss. We really wanted it to be research-based. So, we read the book. In reading the book, we realized, okay, we can move away from incentives, but what we really need is to get books in the hands of kids and to create a culture of the fact that reading shouldn't stop in the summer. This really is a very, very social activity. So when kids go out on the playground, um, they often talk about movies or TV shows, but how can we get kids to start talking about books that they've read? So we really, our push was more than just summer reading, our push is more of a social, cultural piece for our, for our area, for our community. So I really have to thank so many people. I met with Jolene from the public library, she came to our literacy coaches' meetings. Uh, we talked about how we could collaborate. We started this year just with our theme. So our theme this year was Reading Takes You Everywhere. And every week, the students would go, were invited to come into our libraries. So all of the schools, five of the elementaries and Forest View Elementary, or Forest View Middle School, were open for two hours a week. And through some grants, um, there was a staff member present and a lot of volunteers. So kids were able to check out books. We actually had a thousand students sign in, so we had a login system. And we know that there were many more that actually attended, because we had weeks where there were so many children coming that we didn't have enough Chromebooks set up in order to make that system go fast enough. So, even though we would have liked to have seen even more students come, we know that next year will be even better. So, um, thanks to, um, Crowing Power, um, Community Trust, NJPA or Sourcewell, Blackridge and Deerwood Bank, they donated, um, close to eight thousand dollars so that we were able to make that check-in, um, checkout process and with the re-shelving of books to keep our libraries in good condition for the fall. We also were able to do some fun activities with the kids, have some fun programs. At Nisswa, those programs that they've done historically in the past, we were able to do that as well. Niss, or not Nisswa, Lowell Elementary took on a new component to their summer reading program. Because prior to the district-wide summer reading program, all of the buildings were doing something. This year, we just started to firm it up a little bit so that there's more access for all of our learners. And at Lowell, they started to do book clubs, so it became more of a social event where they would have six to ten children, they would all read the same book, and they came, they, together, they talked about the book, and then they did fun activities, um, tie-dying shirts or slip-in slides, all related to the book that they were reading. Uh, we also had, were able to have some celebrations, some pizza parties and, um, ice cream. Again, to make it that social, cultural piece. We really, really could not have done it without all of the teacher volunteers. In every building, there were teachers every week who volunteered their time to come in and do read-alouds with kids and book talks to try to sell books. I heard a story today of a Baxter child with special needs who came every single week. And when he came back this week from school, um, he's actually reading at a higher level than what he was reading when he left us in the spring. So he, his passion was ignited, and he found a series of books, Dogman, it's a graphic text. Um, he's really, really excited about, and, um, it's really just, you know, kinda gives me the shivers to think that, even just this one little story, and I know that there's more out there of all of the amazing things that happened over the summer. We also have to thank the Baxter, the Lowell, and the Nisswa PTAs. They donated close to seventy-five hundred dollars just for books for children in our red and yellow. So we took our spring data and looked at, okay, our hardest-to-reach learners, what if they can't come in? What if they can't come in for book checkout? They don't have parents, um, that have that flexibility and their busy schedules to bring them in, middle of the week, to, um, go to the library. So, in the research that we had done, we found that if you send an average of, of about twelve to fourteen books home with children, it will also help them sustain and grow, um, as a reader. So, with that, don't, with their donations, we sat down with each of the children in red and yellow, one-on-one, and we ordered books of their choice. So then, on the last day of school, they walked away with twelve to fourteen books for the summer. So, our goal is, this, this past year, with all of the donations and all of, um, the grants that we received, it came to about eighteen thousand dollars. My goal for this next year is about forty thousand, so that we can ensure that we get books in the hands of every single child in the red and yellow, and every single child of need. And we can also ramp up that social, cultural piece at each of the summer reading programs in each of the buildings.
That's awesome. Thank you for doing that.
Absolutely.
For the teachers that gave them their time to do that.
Yeah. It, it really takes a village.
That's terrific, thank you, that's great.
Thank you, Jill. Next up, we have our action items. First of all, the approval of the gymnastics agreement, including Brainerd, Crosby, Ironton, and Pequot Lakes. Charlie.
Good evening, thanks for having me. That's a tough act to follow. But, uh, you know, important nevertheless, um, just a little history for you. It is our kind of most recent philosophy that we are not, um, going to actively pursue establishing cooperative agreements with other schools. The High School League allows, um, schools like Brainerd across the state to partner with other schools to offer an activity jointly. The idea was, I, I think, early in its, uh, uh, conceptual design was two small schools that would independently not be able to offer an opportunity, to come together to offer that opportunity. Well, what has transpired, uh, over time is that larger schools like Brainerd have had the opportunity, while smaller regional schools could never offer these things. And, uh, schools like us have had to, um, decide whether or not we were going to allow those agreements to, uh, to happen and exist. And also over time is, uh, we've gotten competitive over students. There's a lot of school choice out there for kids, and what we know is that school funding follows kids and, and so it provides for some very robust, um, dialogue around what is our philosophy and what do we want to do. And, um, it's been our more recent position not to establish agreements, uh, unless we need kids from other schools to offer the program. Uh, I'll give you an example. Um, we've, in our previous lacrosse club, uh, we had students from Crosby, Ironton, we had students from Pequot Lakes, and, um, we had students from Little Falls. And we've decided that, no, this is our activity, we're gonna offer it. If you're that interested in lacrosse, you're gonna come to Brainerd High School, 'cause we offer a fantastic education for kids. And, um, and that's great. Well, what happened in gymnastics? Uh, we had one gymnast, uh, from Staples Motley, Millie Klufsis, she was a wonderful warrior gymnast for us, for many years, and, uh, just a, just a super kid. Well, she has graduated, she's going to college in North Carolina, and Cr- or Staples does not have another gymnast in the pipeline. And so they've requested to get out of the agreement, but there's a process to make that happen. So, uh, over the course of the summer, you voted to dissolve, uh, or approved the dissolution of our cooperative agreement. But, when that happens, um, now our gymnasts, uh, warrior gymnasts from Crosby and Pequot Lakes suddenly don't have a home. And so, um, I'm back to you, uh, to say through no fault of their own, and because of the actions or, uh, just, I guess, desires of Staples Motley, I would like to keep those other schools involved, uh, in our gymnastics program, because we would effectively being, um, kind of mid-career, putting some gymnasts out on the street and taking away their high school gymnastics home, which doesn't feel like, to me, the right thing to do. So I would entertain any questions you might have, but I would be seeking your approval to basically establish a new agreement with the schools that we've historically partnered with, um, minus Staples, or, or, yeah, Staples Motley.
What are the numbers in gymnastics, or how many?
We had twenty last year, and that's typically where we hover. We've been, I wanna say as low as seventeen. Um, in my, uh, seven years, this will be eight. And we've been as high as, uh, maybe twenty-seven or twenty-eight. Last season, we had twenty-four girls from Crosby, Ironton last year, um, and we'll have, uh, three of those girls back and one girl from Pequot Lakes. Um, that's part of our community ed or, or, uh, club programming.
So was it simply an oversight at the time we dissolved the original cooperative? Or it was still in discussion about whether we'd move to this next phase with the, the smaller group, or...
Yes, we just, I didn't have all of the, um, signatures returned on the, um, the application piece, so that, that, because that was, uh, a little more formal, uh, board action on that end of things, so...
Okay.
I so moved to approve the new gymnastics agreement with Brainerd, Crosby, Ironton, and Pequot.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a first with Director Campbell and a second with Director Robinson. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, same sign, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
Next up, the approval of the schematic design for Harrison Elementary. Elaine, did you wanna say something here? The reason tonight that I'm running the meeting instead of Ruth is that she's out of town. And as you can see, Director Nystrom is not here. So, we wanted to make sure that everyone was on board before we move forward with this very important decision that we're doing here tonight. And so Elaine has contacted them via email, and she has a statement to read from each Director Nelson and Director Nystrom.
Thank you. Yes, both of the board members, um, submitted a, a statement that they had asked me to read to, to everyone, to just let the rest of the board know, uh, where they are as far as the schematic design for the three buildings. And I'll start with Chair Nelson's, uh, statement that she submitted last week. And it's, "As a member of the project oversight team and a school board member, I fully support the approval of the current schematic designs for Harrison, Nisswa, and the new elementary school in Baxter. I have been impressed with the discussion that has occurred during the design process. Great work and thorough review have been completed. I would vote yes on the motions to approve the designs." Ruth Nelson. And then, um, Director Nelson, or Nystrom, excuse me, also submitted, um, a statement, and it's, this says, "Dear Superintendent Larson and fellow board members, I'm absent tonight due to a family business that makes it unable for me to be there. I've reviewed the schematic designs for the Nisswa Elementary School and Harrison Elementary School remodels, and also for the new construction of the, of the Baxter Elementary School. I'm in full support of these plans and would vote yes if present. Thank you, Bob Nystrom." And so both of them asked me if I... And so both of them asked me if I would read those statements tonight to, to share with the public.
All right, then. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the schematic design for Harrison Elementary.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a first from Director Haglund and a second from Director Campbell. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Approval for the schematic design for Nisswa Elementary School. Is there a motion?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, we have a first with Director Campbell and a second with Director Robinson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes. Once again here, approval of the schematic design for the new elementary school in Baxter. Is there a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Thank you. We have a first with Director Robinson, the second with Director Haglund. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Informational, that was easy. Informational, Brainerd Public Schools Foundation report. Director Campbell.
Thank you, Chair Kern. The foundation met this afternoon at three o'clock. And Ms. Corey Reynolds was there to talk about coalition funds that the Initiative Foundation has available and will have a match and could be up to like twenty-five thousand dollars, which will again provide more money towards the four A's. So they're working on that. They approved their twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen budget, went over that. And then talked about the four A grants for this next season. It's probably going to be around the forty-five thousand dollar mark again, or more, probably because they usually come up with some more funds. But again, to be able to offer that kind of monies towards, towards grants is really great. So we're looking forward to that. And then just talked about all the new things coming up during, during the homecoming festivities. We're going to have the Hall of Fame and that happens on October fourth. And that's going to be at the Luminary Fern out at the NP Center area instead of, I think we talked, it was going to be at Craigens last time, but it is at Luminary.
We had said, we had said Grandview, but it's going to be at the Luminary Fern.
Yeah, Luminary Fern is where that will be held. So that'll be a nice event there, about a hundred and fifty that, that holds. And we're recognizing the three new Hall of Fame inductees then. And the Warrior Homecoming Run is happening on Saturday, the sixth of October. So that will be happening before the game and parade and all that stuff. They're also having a little event at the Roundhouse Brewery on the, on Friday night, the fifth there. So every beer is poured there, will be, a dollar will be donated towards the homecoming run and things there. And then the parade, again, is happening on, on the sixth. So all kinds of things happening there with them and working on the big event, again, which will be in February. And I think I covered it all.
You did.
Thank you. That's all I have.
That was a busy meeting.
It was.
It really was.
Busy. They're, they're a really fun group.
It's good to know when homecoming's coming, October sixth. That's great.
They're very organized this year. It's, they've got every activity ready to go and, yeah, it was awesome.
Great. Curriculum report. Mr. Murtha, did you have anything else?
Nothing else reported, I think you had it.
Well, you did a great job. Business services report, Marcy Lord. Enrollment update.
I was gonna, you know, leave that for last, but I can start with that. So I'm not going to give any numbers as of yet, but I did want to give an update that it is looking positive when we look at how we began the year last year and how we began the year this year. We do tend to, when we look at the first day, Sue pulled the numbers for the last three years. And when we look at the first day versus October first in fifteen sixteen, we lost about one point one percent. In sixteen seventeen, we lost about one point seven percent. And then seventeen eighteen, we lost about two point zero percent. So when we look at that trend, this year, we will still, it's still positive compared to the budget. At the next board meeting, I hope to actually have, you know, a physical report that you guys will see with the financials. But just wanted to give an update that it is looking positive.
Very good. Thank you.
Marcy, remind us, had we forecast in the budget an increase in enrollment?
Very slight. It was not, yeah, it was like point, I want to say it was like one or two A D Ms. It wasn't very much.
Sure, but the initial indications are that we'll need or exceed that.
Correct.
Thank you.
And then I just wanted to give an update on the school safety grants. Those were submitted and I totaled them for all twelve sites. We submitted two point nine million in the grants. And just an update, the school finance awards were given out and we did get one. You know, there's five hundred and seventy-five eligible reporting entities and four hundred and sixty-nine received it. So you have to have timely submission of financial data, compliance with Minnesota statutes, certain indicators of fiscal health and accuracy in financial reporting, so real exciting stuff.
Very good. Thank you. That's good. Superintendent's report.
My report, everything that I have outlined here that I wanted to talk about has been talked about except for one thing, and that is that we have just had a really phenomenal start to the school year. We're very excited to have all of our students and our staff back. As Marcy said, I'm a little bit more openly optimistic about the enrollment that we're seeing right now, but we're being cautious and we're excited to get the final numbers and to share that. And our staff have come back just ready to go. We had a great kickoff and everywhere we go, it just seems like the schools, people are just very, very happy to be back. And so we're thrilled to be educating the children of Brainerd Public Schools. So, yeah, so it's going to be a great year.
Yes, it is. Thank you. Okay, there are no standing committee reports. Future board meetings and committee meetings, September twenty-fourth. There's the public hearing for the property acquisitions at five forty-five PM here in the boardroom. Also, September twenty-fourth, our regular school board meeting following the acquisitions at six o'clock. September thirtieth, a Massa conference at Maddens. October eighth, regular school board meeting at six o'clock. November sixth, election day. Is there any other business to come?
That's it?
That's it. Call this meeting adjourned.
Can I copy off? You did these things for me?
Yes. My case of my hand, Peter.